It is 7:23 about and we're calling the meeting of the planning board.
I swear.
Yeah, we're zooming from where we're going upstairs. So the first item on the agenda, general business, is to approve the previous minutes. Did anyone have any questions on the minutes?
They were so long ago.
I know I didn't have any time for the issue. To approve the meeting minutes, prior meeting minutes.
Okay, motion made, any discussion? Tom, Tom on?
No.
Actually, I should do the roll call. But let's take the vote on this first. So Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
I vote aye. And now let's do the roll call vote, so passage unanimously, roll call vote. Paul Carey is here. Margaret Carroll? Ken Wright?
Here.
Tommy Davidson?
Yep, here.
Kathy Robinson is here, so we're all in attendance. Okay, second item on the agenda is treasurer's report. Is there any treasures to report, Mr. Treasurer?
I've got nothing to report.
Okay. So that makes it quick, we'll just move on to the next item, which is planer's report. Do you want to move that to the end or you want to do it?
Yes, to the end.
Okay, so we'll move that to the end because they're late getting started anyway. So the first agenda meeting item in terms of hearings, if they are meetings, public meeting on pickleball courts at Cobbless Creek. John Burns, are you on the call?
Yes, I am. I tried to log in on my laptop, I was unsuccessful, so I'm on my cellphone.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Maybe because we weren't on, because we were, took us 20 minutes to log in. So do you want to lead off and tell us what your?
Sure. Sure, I didn't know if Michael was doing the presentation, but be happy to. So just to refresh, we had a meeting back in early July. I requested to see if we could eliminate the pickleball courts at Cobbless Creek due to pushback from buyers. And I sent in some letters of support from the two existing homeowners that are up there supporting the elimination of them. And I think we're all a little hung up on procedurally how to do this. In the interim, I worked with Mike Antonellis and came up with a way that we would do a site, I'm sorry, a plan modification. And I submitted that early August. And it's essentially just looking for a modification to the plan to eliminate the pickleball courts.
Yeah, so through the chair, the item before the board, right now, as was described, it's a request for a minor modification to a site plan. As Mr. Burns was just noting, that we had previous conversation here at the board, as well as myself and Mr. Burns, on how to address this. It seems like site plan, minor modification seems like the best way to go, given that it is a very, I take in everybody's opinion, a very minor modification, obviously. And that's, but that is, that's for the board to decide tonight, if you agree formally on request of approval of this application, if it is a minor modification, requiring no other public hearings or anything like that. So that's the ask for the board, following the procedures set forth in the site plan rules and regulations. So an application was filed, a fee was received, there is no, it's a public meeting, there's no notice requirements as a result of the site plan rules and regulations. So it's not a public hearing in that regard. I don't know how the board typically handles this, but we can do a simple decision document after, you know, should you arrive at a decision tonight? A simple decision document that'll go on file with the project. So on the request.
Yeah, Matt, I'm the chairperson. Mike, if I may, would it be appropriate to make a motion to approve the request for the modification subject to receiving the plan to be filed and to replace the old plan? Is that what we're looking for, is a motion from the board to approve the request?
Oh, sorry, I thought that was a motion.
Should it be approved the request as a minor mod, should we use the words minor modification in the motion?
I would, Tom, unless you have, through the chair, unless you have a different opinion as to how it's been addressed before, my instinct would be to go with what Carol said, and specific reference to the minor modification.
Well, the, my only thing is this wasn't approved by a written decision, it was approved by a plan. It was just a part of a plan. So the replacement and the acceptance of the change would be just the plan showing that removed. It would be a vote to approve it, and then just a simple plan showing that it's been eliminated. Because I don't think we put this in writing, so I think we replaced it with the same thing that put it in there in the first place, with just the plan.
That works for me, because I, you know, the question was to confirm that we're not replacing the pickleball courts with anything. It's just going to show as open space. And I can't use that, not as small, oh, small ass, it's just, it's, it's, it's just going to be grass for now. And if there was anything else to be done with it, Mr. Burns had said he would come back to the board and there's no plan on it right now. So it'll just be, it'll be grass right now. I'm fine with that procedure.
Through the chair, I'll just note for the record that you received a copy of, I believe, is it noted as an open space plan? I forget what the notation is on it, but to Tom's point earlier, a copy of the plan that was originally submitted and approved by the board was, is presented tonight and is highlighting, obviously, where the pickleball courts are. As Paul just mentioned, those are slated to be removed and not replaced with anything at its time.
So if everyone's, if Mr. Burns doesn't have any concern with what we're talking about, I would move that we approve a minor modification of the plan to show the removal of the depicted pickleball court, courts. And the developer will provide us with an amended plan showing the pickleball courts removed. That's my motion.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Is there any, Julie, is there anyone listening in that has any comments?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so now we take a vote. Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Aye.
Watch your face. Tommy?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so it's unanimous. So the next thing we do is, you write the decision, Mike?
Yeah, well, I think what Tom was suggesting, that, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're not going to do a formal decision, we're just going to replace the plan in the file and make notation of it. Is that correct?
Yes, and the recorded vote allows, authorizes that.
What it is.
Okay. So, next item is we.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just ask one, just so I'm clear, I will get a plan showing that any area with the pickleball courts eliminated and just submit it to Michael? Can I, just because the engineer's backed up, can I have approximately 21, 30 days to do that, to submit it to Michael?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you very much, I really appreciate the support on this. Thank you, I wish I could, you could have seen me, but I couldn't get in, but I made it. Thank you.
Good, John, thanks.
Ready, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
So the next is we're going to suspend the public hearing and we can leave the public hearing on Governor's landing. And Jeff, you're on the call?
I'm here, thank you.
And Mike, do you want to say anything or?
Just that I've been working with Jeff to present the draft decision to the board, so that was circulated, I think, yesterday. I sent that out, so we were working on that for a while. I crafted a decision, Jeff, I had the idea of utilizing existing template that the board had used before for the items we just talked about, Cobbless Creek. So that, so that should look fairly familiar to you. But all the components, I think, were there in my original drafts, but it's just a matter of, Jeff went ahead and reformatted it, so it's a little bit familiar and added. I think he had a few, a few more things that I might have missed as well. He also made specific reference in there, and I'm talking way out of order, but to the order of conditions that was granted through the conservation commission. So I thought that was a good, a good catch and appropriate to capture within this document. You know, my review of it is that it's pretty much everything the board's been talking about up until this point. Making specific note that the application is approved, subject to connecting sewer and water from Milford Street regarding the extension of sewer and water. And then, as Attorney Roberts was discussing with the board previously, adding in, I think, I think it landed in finding, something conditions, the finding that applicant always has the opportunity to reapply, essentially, if the town is unable to acquire funding or other, some other commitments to, by November 30th of this year, for the construction and extension of that sewer and water line through the Mass Works Sprint.
So that was actually the one item that I have a question on, and I will, so right now it reads, the condition reads, adequate sewerage and water utilities shall be provided to the site by connection to the utilities that the town intends to construct along Milford Street once those utilities are in place. Do we want that to be any stronger in that, you know, that this is contingent, that current approval is contingent upon those being constructed by, or being of, you know? Where, where are we, because I'm page?
I had some, I had a similar comment on page seven, maybe I should get through to say? I had a few minor comments, too, that I'll go back to, but that was, that was the unsubstantive one that I had. And I mean, look at seven, page seven, it's going to be 23D, top half of the page. I would change that opening line to say the applicant has also agreed to, as opposed to represented, that it would accept. But the applicant's agreed to accept. And then it goes on to say, but with a reservation of its, the applicant's right to challenge the condition and to pursue a modification of a special permit if the town doesn't get the grant or go ahead and, and, and build the infrastructure. And I get that, and that's what we talked about, the applicant said, hey, if you guys don't go forward, I need to be able, I need to be able to at least say, I like, you know, this plan was good, I want to do this exact plan with the overland route, but we haven't engineered the whole overland route. So I wanted to at least add a sentence to the end of that, where they say that they've got the right, you know, to say, the town's rights to approve or deny such a modification are also fully reserved. Because we, you know, this board hasn't, we haven't looked at that overland route. So I, you know, I'm not saying that, I don't know that it's appropriate or not. So that, that would be my change on that, and I don't know if that addresses.
I think that, yeah, it's just the, the way that the condition is worded, it doesn't sound super conditional. Although I guess it is, it shall be provided from the site. I think that your, your, your proposed change addresses that, I was concerned that.
Jeff, I know you're only hearing this for the first time, but I only read it once so far, too.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, we're comfortable with the language you suggested, those revisions to that paragraph are fine.
I had a similar question about the, about that section D, and I, you're, it was about review during the modification process, which I found the stuff, because it's a special permit process, it's a whole new thing. But I think that your change that you recommended, and so you reserve right, that's fine. Any other comments from us or?
I had minor stuff, if you want to just, and I'll, I'll hand them to Mike when, when I'm done, and we can P F them over to you, or if you guys can talk about them. Just on page one, there was just a typo in that, the sample, you love my typos, come on.
I can't find it in your minutes.
Just in the, in the second full paragraph, the application to the board is dated, there's a typo in the date.
So there it is.
Yeah, on page three, on number three, it's pointed out that for lot, you know, the future development is not regulated by the special permit, that's how it ends. I put that up in the end of the first sentence, too. So it's the applicant proposes to construct 100 unit senior housing community on lot one and 27 townhouse units on lot two. That's not us, so I would put parentheses, not regulated by the special permit, we're not, we're not lot two. Down in five B, the applicant has also received, and I would just delete the word approval, it's an order of conditions. And then at the very end of that B, five B, issued eight slash 1523. Top of page four, I mean, I, they are really small typos, I think, so I'll only call them out if they were, oh. I'll, I'll hand the typos, I think, to Mike, or I, what I think are typos, but they're not material. The only one I found on page four, in nine, the one, two, third bullet point, it says we'll conserve viable acres. I think that might be valuable acres of open land, as opposed to viable acres. That's the section. I'll leave it to you, either one, yeah, they're viable, open. We give them four parking spaces per unit, huh? That's a lot, is that two in the garage and two in the driveway?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
With respect to that viable term, that language comes out of the zoning bylaw, I think you're probably right, that that's what they meant.
Yeah, Tom, okay. On page seven, number 27, just questions for me, illumination, right? If this was a subdivision, we would say, you got to give us the, the, the design of the streetlights, and we'll let the selectmen decide whether to illuminate the streets. And they always choose no unless it's a, you know, a dangerous intersection. But this is illumination within the, within the project. So who's going to decide on streetlights and who's going to pay for them?
Well, that would be the, that would be the developer putting these in. And so the site plans called out locations for lights, and they gave a detail on what those lights were.
Right, well, who's going to pay for the deuce?
Yeah, the selectmen usually reject the lights because they don't want to pay for the juice, only a dangerous intersection, so they put them in.
Because you'd be, like, there's no, there'd be no separate meter, right? So it'd be, if you're, and Jeff, it's probably, I mean, I don't think you're going to care too much, but it's, you know, the HOA is not going to get an electric bill for those, for those lights, right? It's going to go to the town.
I guess I don't know the answer to that. Does it go to the town only if they've accepted the roadway? Or does it always go to the town because there's no meter for?
You do more of this than I do, come on, I'm asking you.
By the time it gets to that point in construction, we don't, I don't deal with these things, so.
That's true.
I don't, if you want to, if you want to include a provision that requires us to coordinate the lighting at this development with the town manager and with the selectmen, if recommended by the town manager, we're comfortable with that?
I think that's the way to go, because I just, and Tommy, do you, I mean, this is kind of a different animal, right? I don't know if you've dealt with it before.
No, but the, the, the bill is going to go to the town because it's not a, it's not a public, it's a public way according to the utilities, this traffic going. Utilities aren't going to consider this a private, they're going to consider it part of Upton, and they're going to bill the town for the streetlights.
Right, so I think we ought to just put that, I think, if Mike and Jeff can work on that kind of from a standard, you know, what our standard is, which is, we're okay with the design, but it is up to the selectmen slash town manager to decide whether they get a little bit.
Should that, should that clarification go in that section of the findings, or should that be added as a condition?
I think it's a condition, let's just make it clear for the people trying to implement this decision, that if you want us to coordinate with the selectmen, let's add a condition to that effect.
I mean, is there any way?
Yeah, I mean, this, this, I mean, this binding really talks about, you know, we're not going to shine on other people's property, and it's the right, it's the right style of lighting fixture, so I think it is a condition, as Jeff said.
Well, I do have a question on that. Why is the homeowners' association not responsible?
Because they wouldn't be able, they don't, they won't build the electricity line to those individual lights.
And they can't do it, they can't put a meter in there? Because I do know, like, you have lights going up to your house, like I do.
Yeah, that's my bill.
I pay the bill.
Right.
Yeah, but they're, but they're coming off of your box.
Right.
Right, and this won't come off of any?
No, so they'd have to put an HOA box or something. I've never seen that, nor do I think the town wants that.
No, I just didn't know if that was an important part of the project, for the safety inside the, you know, inside the development.
Each unit could have their own light post, that they can turn on and off, they can turn it on.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, that is an alternative, too, and I wondered if that's what they were going to be proposing here. But I would be fine with a condition that requires us to coordinate any, any lighting within the development with the selectmen. You know, if you've got a standard condition that you impose in the subdivision context, we'll just draw from that.
All right, and the only other comment, I'll give Mike just a couple of, you know, comments and things like that. The only other thing is on a rant, I am no longer the chair, happy not to be. So we just have to reorder the, the titles of the four voting members, and Mike, and I didn't even pretend to look at the list of exhibits. I'm relying on Mike and Graves to do that, that's all I have.
Can I just ask the board, and maybe the members that have been on the board for a longer time? So this list of exhibits came from the ZBA's decision, and it's somewhat unusual, I think, to attach all of these things. So I'm not even sure if the ZBA intended to attach all this stuff. So anyways, it's listed here, this is.
It's in our file, right? And we're going to keep our file, I wouldn't kill the tree.
This list was prepared for the ZBA decision. If you want to include a list of the, the key materials that are in your file, and include that as exhibit number four, that's how this is drafted now.
Yeah, that's what it says, just, it's a list of materials.
Yeah, if you're fine with that, I just want to work with Mike to go through the list again, and just make sure we haven't missed some things that might have gone directly to the planning board and not the zoning board. Because again, this list was really done for the ZBA decision, so it's going to be pretty similar. But there may be a couple pieces of information that we want to include here that we, maybe not on the list, I'm not sure yet. But that's a, that's a clerical exercise, it's not substantive.
Does anyone else on the planning board have any comments? Tom?
Well, looking at it from a different perspective, if you look at the impacts that your development's going to be on the town, I think you've mitigated all of them, whether it's, you know, police, fire, emergency, a school system certainly not going to be affected with the senior housing. The only impact that would be a problem is if you had to go overland, and you've agreed to go through a site plan review process for that. And you're pretty much an expert on site plan review, so that's not going to be an easy thing, and I think that's fine with me.
Is there anybody on the call, that, on the, not in this meeting, who has any questions? Not at the front, okay, hearing done? Do I hear a motion?
I would, I move to close the public hearing.
I'm the second.
So any discussion?
Well, one thing I have is just that, at the last meeting, the decision deadline was extended to, I think it was generally September, so I'm interpreting that as September 1st, I don't think it was identified as a particular day in September. So I just want to get that clarified, so we know what timeframe we have in order to get this decision document, should, I assume the board's about to vote, so.
So we can close the public hearing, right? And then we'll, can we reopen the public hearing and ask?
And get, go.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So.
So we're happy to give you whatever time you think you need, Mike, to get this buttoned up and signed and filed with the town clerk.
I'm going to toss that to the, to the board, I mean, everybody's.
We have a problem having the vote tonight with the changes that were discussed and agreed upon.
Um, sign in our next meeting.
And sign in our next meeting, I think that you've been pretty patient waiting for this to move forward, so.
That's, that's the 12th, so if you're signing it on the, right, the 12th.
So why don't we just get, get the, get the shot clock extended?
Yes.
The applicant is so inclined, would love the shot clock extended to our second meeting. So that'd be the 26th, double check.
So let's say the 27th, then, so if anything happens that night, you can deal with it the next day, town clerk. September, should we just say September 30? I mean, I don't know what day of the week that is, that's fine.
Do we just say September 12?
September 12 is the next meeting.
Okay, just to, yeah, just to give ourselves some buffer is the idea.
Okay.
September 27, let's do that, how about that?
You're voting tonight, so.
Okay, so that gives us a chance to, okay.
But I don't vote on this, right? Yeah, all right, all right, so I move to close the public hearing.
And I second, and do you also move to extend the shot clock?
We can do that after.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, vote, Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
You can't vote, Tommy?
Aye.
And I vote aye, okay?
All right, I would move to agree to the applicant's request to extend the shot clock for a formal decision to September 27. Would ask that the applicant get us something in writing to that effect, but I'm going to move to approve that request.
And I will second the motion as well.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
And I vote aye, okay?
Give me one sec to catch up?
No. You have to look forward to it.
Yeah, I'll be terrible.
You could be better than me.
I've missed mine, oh, I guess it's, it comes after, after chair? You were chair last week.
Chair, would you, will you entertain a motion for me?
I will entertain a motion.
I would move that the board approve the special permit and execute the special permit decision with the changes that we've discussed tonight.
Including all the conditions that's presented in the draft. And the addition.
Yeah, as, yeah, okay.
And so, do I hear a second?
Paul, on the second.
Paul, on the second, okay. Any discussion? Hearing done, Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
And I vote ayes, thanks for the attention.
That's great, I really appreciate all the time that you all put into this. You're going to be hearing more from us soon, because we'll be heading into the MEPA process shortly, hopefully within the next three weeks or so. That MEPA filing is going to cover both the sewer utility run in Milford Street and this project. So that's just a heads up, because the planning board gets notice of that filing, so, just so that you're not surprised.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, I just wanted to let you know that when you started this, weed was illegal and you could get cigarettes anywhere.
Say that again, I missed it, I think it was good, I want to hear it again.
Said, when you started this, weed. Said when you started this, uh, weed was illegal and you could get cigarettes anywhere.
I know. It was a long time ago.
It's been a long, it's a rare.
I think our relationship has gotten more healthy over the years. I can say that. We started, we started out on a pretty sour footing. When I came in, that was.
I forget that that, that stream is a cold water fishery.
Exactly right, remember that. All right, well, thank you for all your time again.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
Next on the agenda, um.
That was my first year on the board.
I was still on.
We got constructive approval of that project because we missed, uh, we, we, uh, we voted on time and didn't get the decision to, that logged in with the town clerk by a day.
Yeah, and the Concom rejected it.
Yeah.
And I was chair of Concom, and so we went all the way up.
We just mediation again.
Yeah.
Oh, was that another time to end Concoms?
No. Top showed up in that mail.
That's when I first started.
That was terrible.
Do you remember a conservation when, uh, you made them change the roadway because they were too close? And because they had to change roadway, that means they had to come back to the planning board for a major change and a new, and we could have, uh, turned them down again, so because of conservation, it turned into this.
Yeah.
It's not your fault, Mark.
Hopefully it's a better plan than the book.
That was, it was a awful plan.
Okay, so we're now going into our, um, since East Street Estates withdrew, do we still need to convene a special?
Oh, yeah, I would, I would do that, yes, and then, uh, you should take a motion to accept the, uh, to withdraw without, I guess.
Yeah, that. So, that's the regular meeting, and we're going to, um, reopen the public hearing for East Street Estates.
I would move that we, uh, accept the applicant's motion, uh, request to withdraw the application without prejudice.
And I don't think anybody's on for the public on this, but in case anybody was, um, the applicant submitted a request to withdraw the subdivision application without prejudice, meaning they don't want uh, the board to approve or deny, they're just removing their request.
And they can resubmit anytime?
Yep, yeah, and they don't, they're not restricted, they can re, resubmit anytime.
And I will second Paul's motion.
Well, is there anybody on the call? Oh, before we do? Okay, yes.
So I second Paul's motion to accept the, the request to withdraw.
Any further, um, comments from the board?
We can vote to, uh, turn it down as well. We don't have to withdraw. Also deny it.
Do have that.
We could just keep the public.
That is not the motion on the floor, Tom, so. So, okay, let's call a vote. Um, and you can't vote on this one either, right?
So.
No, but you'll be able to when they resubmit.
I was just saying, it doesn't.
Well, got you.
Cause I gotta study up.
Yeah, okay, Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
I thought you were gonna vote no. I vote aye. So that.
Now we need a motion to close the public hearing. You have to close.
How about you?
Do we? Is anyone else withdrawn?
You probably don't need to.
Okay.
But it doesn't matter if you do.
So.
It usually doesn't matter anything.
Okay, so then we have, um, you know, just so we is there anyone on the call to discuss, um, either the, uh, the zone, the, um?
Goodman's from Rushford is on here.
Yeah, and we also have someone from Westboro Road on, correct?
I don't think they're on.
Yeah, Taniel, are you on?
Okay, but we do have someone on from Rushford, so, um, why don't we open this question on, I'm first, it's on the block.
Brian, Brian, are you on? You're, you're on mute if you're trying to.
Oh, yeah, right, right here, guys. Sorry, don't mind, I'm trying to, first of all, thank you so much for skipping ahead to me. I'm trying to juggle bedtime with the kids and, uh, have one ear in, so, when you guys are ready for me, I'm, I'm ready, yeah.
You're on.
You're on.
Okay, so, uh, right now, and it's technically Goodman Property Holdings, not Rushford, uh, because we're just talking, we, uh, right, so right now, um, my partner in Goodman Property Holdings, Chris Crowley, and I'm not sure if he's on or not. Um, but we are investigating, putting, putting together a plan to subdivide the property with our surveyor. And, uh, the surveyor is working through some of the bylaws and seeing if we need a variance or what we need. But while he's working on that, I've, uh, discussing it with, uh, Michael, I, I figured out, well, besides the fact I miss you guys, I haven't talked to you in a while, which I suppose is a good thing, but, uh, just wanted to reach out and see if there's something specific or anything that we wouldn't normally think about that you would want to see in terms of a proposal to subdivide the property at Eight Grove Street.
So when you, when you talk about subdivision, are you talking about taking the house and the, and the brewery as separate, or?
Well, yeah, specifically keeping the building that the brewery is in and then the, uh, house behind it and keeping that as one property and then carving out the two family, um, as a second property with the intention of selling to a developer who is, has more resources to actually do something with it rather than just letting it sit there the way it is.
And so, um, from a process point of view, I wanted, uh, to take this opportunity and, um, get, get Brian in front of the board so we can all get on the same page as what, what needs to be done based on what he wants to do. And so, he wants to divide the property as he was just discussing, uh, separating off that residential portion of the lot, creating its own, creating it as its own lot, and then the, the business, uh, the brewery and the, um, building out back would be on uh, its own lot as well, together, I mean, so it's, uh, two lots, right?
Yeah, yeah, so right now it's one lot, so, yeah. Sorry, sorry, Michael.
No, no, sorry, and then the issue being is that when they does go to, uh, um, divide those lots, he's short but what is it, like, 10 feet of frontage, I think it was?
Uh, yeah, I want to say it was 10 feet, yeah, I know we, we measured it out the other day. I want to say it's 10 feet, roughly 10 feet.
And is the, the parking plan, is it, as it was originally laid out, is entirely on the lot that would be keeping the brewery? I think so.
Uh, so right now, that is something that we will need to discuss because I think there's three spots that might be on the area that we'd be looking to subdivide. Again, we're still working on that. I, well, me, I have my homework that I haven't done for, for the, uh, surveyor yet, so shame on me. But, um, I think that we might be losing three spots, so I know we would need to talk to you about that too. Michael did make sure to mention that to me also.
Yeah, so if, um, so a couple things, so, um, obviously, if, if parking is, is um, going to be reduced, the site plan is implicated, uh, the site plan that was approved, right, so we'd have to come by and possibly do a minor modification to that site plan. But also, keeping in mind that this property was approved, I believe it's through this board, um, for the mixed use special permit in the UCBD district, right? Um, and so just wanting to confirm with the board, um, the status of that approval should be, um, uh, subdivide, uh, subdivide, you know, probably the wrong word, but divide the property, um, and separating the residential use from the business use.
So, I'm, uh, just listening and not seeing it, I would like to see the depiction, but we can't really help you with 10 feet of frontage.
No, 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 that would be a Board of Appeals, um, action.
Yeah.
But I wanted to give you the whole picture.
So, you know, if you cut, you know, if you cut, you couldn't come to us with just an A and R plan, I guess, you'd have, you'd have to have that determination by the selectmen, um, that, that you're gonna have two legal lots and if some of your parking was on a piece of property that you're not gonna own anymore, we wouldn't my, my initial reaction is I wouldn't count those parking spots. If you're trying to get creative and, and had a, you know, a perpetual parking easement or something, um, maybe we'd talk about it because it is a, you know, it's a, it's a, an area where we're supposed to be, where, where we can be flexible, um, but I'd need something where you had, if, if you wanted to say, uh, I want to keep the same number of seats, you'd have to have the same number of parking spots. A parking spot is your parking spot if you've got the legal right to park there. Um, so I'd, I'd be looking for something, you know, contractual or easement. Um, and if it, you didn't have it with the new owner, then you'd have to find that parking somewhere else or lose the seats that came with the parking. And somewhere else, you know, it depends on what you're doing, um, you know, the distance and things like that. So, same things, yeah, the same calc we went through before, and I
Yep.
Tom and I had different ways of looking at the shared parking down there, so. Yeah.
Yeah, we went through it a lot with the library as well, how we
Correct.
restaurants, shared parking spaces, so I think that's something we should clean up, so that it's clear.
Well, and now the park, you know, parking in the library is getting yeah, pretty heavy use, so I think we'd have to kind of look at, I mean, if you were gonna say, hey, it's okay, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lose these three spots next door when I sell off this two family, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna count more spots over at the community center. At least I would say, well, now that we have a, an active community center, I want to understand what the actual usage is, because that thing is being used both day and night, you know? So, I'd be open to listen. Now I think it's issues, you know, those, those two, those are the two big issues, I see.
Uh, to the chair, I got a couple.
Okay, fair, thank you.
Uh, a couple of questions, uh, one of the first ones from Mike, does the, if we cover out the two family, does that two family's use fall outside of the center district? Whereas it's only a single, uh, uh, residential lot of two, two families?
My good shape is.
I don't, um, well, I, I, I guess I need a little more clarification on your question, Tom. The, uh, the, the property itself as it is right now is within the, um, center business district. Um, so dividing the lots wouldn't affect the, the, um, the location of the district, but I'm not sure if that's what you were asking.
The use of.
Well, but, well, the thing is, any, anything that that lot contributed to in the process, whether it's through square footage, frontage, um, setbacks or, or parking, would have to be considered if it was to be eliminated from the brewery, right? Because then if it qualified, if it helped the brewery qualify in any area, and that's, when we're losing that, it would have to be substituted, correct? Like Paul said with the parking. Frontage would be the, but would, would the site plan have, whatever we approved it through, would that have to be, uh, redone? Because there's changes?
Quite possibly. Um, I, I think, I, I think, uh, um, specifically the parking, if the parking is an issue, right? Because that's, that's a large part of what the site plan process, uh, tries to address through, um, uh, through this board. Um, but yeah, that's a good, I mean, yeah, I understand what you're, thanks, thanks for clarifying. Um, yeah, so if you're eliminating that use from what was, uh, all, uh, a use that was approved altogether, yeah, I think it'd be worth crossing that T and dotting that I, you know, and having, having an updated site plan through this board that reflects the accurate changes, right? Um, and then, and then it becomes a zoning matter of, I think this is what you were also commenting on, Tom, which is, uh, does, uh, separating that two family on a lot by itself, then does that, does that create any zoning issues for that lot? Um, I'm not sure that it does, but, um, I have to look into that a little more.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have any questions? Brian, is there anything else, that, any questions you have for us, or what were the next steps? What is?
His next steps were, uh, Brian, we, we were discussing, he was gonna proceed with, um, surveyor to draw up his, uh, um, division of lots plan, submit to the zoning board for variance for the frontage, uh, that he would be lacking on one of the lots, uh, which would be minimal, but, um, he still has to go through that process. Um, he's understanding, he's of the understanding that I explained, that he's not necessarily, you know, he's not guaranteed that approval, um, with it, for the zoning board, so.
Yeah, I would go to them for, I mean, sometimes people ask, go to, you know, which board should I go to first? I mean, that's, that's the.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, we, we'd already had that conversation, uh, and this, this is just a matter of obviously bringing the planning board in, so we're all aware of the process that it would be ongoing, and that was, so we're all comfortable with the process, um, as it comes through. And then, you know, approvals are either granted or, or not, but at least we're all comfortable with what process is.
And then this preparation to look at the three spaces, like how, you know, I think, you know, you mentioned some sort of perpetual easement, um, you know, or else, you know, finding them somewhere, but that will consume a lot of time, so it's probably great if you could look at that.
And the neighbors before your planning, your, um, your, your board hearing for the ZBA?
Yeah, um, I haven't really talked to the neigh, well, I do talk to the neighbors relatively frequently because, uh, I am very thrilled and I want to make sure they, uh, are never bothered with whatever we're do, whatever we're doing at the brewery, that's, uh, important thing for us, uh, for a lot of reasons. Um, but I haven't really talked to them about this. My thought process, so again, the, the thinking is, is whether I develop something, you know, something within the mixed use on that pro, on that part of the property or somebody else does. I mean, I think it's, uh, just speaking in conjecture and not really with, you know, with, you know, anything, um, I think the idea of the up and downtown business district is to, you know, take some of the, what's there and kind of improve it and modernize it. And so I'd like to see that happen, whether it's, uh, us or somebody else do it, I think that's that's kind of our goal and kind of always has been and hasn't really, uh, and, uh, and whether it's us or somebody else, hasn't really changed there, so. We've already been, always been pretty forward about that when anybody's asked.
Okay.
I think it would be just on a personal note, I still think, would love to see it's something, you know, a three and a half story mixed use property with retail on the main floor and residential on a second and third floor, so.
Okay. Okay, so I mean, I guess our recommendation is just keep working, you'll keep, keep Mike appraised to what's going on, it'll keep us appraised, and when you're ready for us, you can come back.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk again, Brian, and we'll, um, hammer out a, 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 a process.
Yeah, Michael, thank you again so much, planning board. Absolutely lovely to talk to you guys, and, uh, have a great night.
Yes.
Take care.
Yep, take care. Bye.
Okay. Okay, and then, um, so let's go back to the first item, which was discussion of potential zoning bylaw, solar on zoning map change.
I think somebody joined too.
Huh?
Somebody joined.
Oh.
Did Taniel join us? Taniel, did you join? Is that you?
I'm sorry, I'm shit.
That's okay. Um, you know, I, I do have, you know, I, I know that you've discussed this in the past, and I know he's got an A for presentation, and I'm not an expert on solar bylaws and how this stuff works, um, but I do want to say that I'm, I'm willing to, to to move forward with, um, the zoning change to allow you know, uh, solar in by right in any, with a special permit in, um, agricultural residential areas, I sort of went with that. Um, but you were gonna give our presentation on that?
Yeah, um, so as, as discussed, and I, I, um, you should have three options as far as, uh, changes that could be made, um, to this zoning bylaw, and they that's the, the, the bronze option, the silver option, the platinum option, essentially. Um, option one is doing sort of the, I'll, I'll just say bare minimum, which is just, just a change to the zoning, to the table of principal uses. Which was discussed, changing, um, you know, it's, like, what's stricken out and underlined and bolded as, as far as what's changing and what's going. Um, in the principal uses, you would have, uh, your two, your two, um, categories, uh, that we currently have for a large scale ground mounted, one being of less than two acres and the other being more than two acres. And that would change from not being allowed in, in the AR district to being allowed by a special permit via PB, planning board special permit, um, as noted in the table. Um, and then additionally, we would add a note to the table, note number 12, that all large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations within the AR zoning district shall follow the 100 foot setbacks from all property lines as described in section 300 dash 6.6, uh, which is the section that defines, um, the dimensional requirements for those sorts of things. And that is intended to. And that is intended to clarify any misconception of if, if, if you, if we were to only go forward and make the change. Switch from N to PB, allowing the special permit, uh, I, I wouldn't want there to be confusion that, oh, but those standards don't apply.
Right.
So.
Did, did, we had talked about putting in minimum acreage as well, could we?
We did, this, um, you do have minimum acreage spelled out in your categories already. So you have, uh, you have, um. What is it, uh, forty thousand square feet to eighty thousand square feet, and that's a separate category from the, uh. Step up, just eighty thousand square feet, um. Is it or over, or, yeah, must it, yeah, or over. But did you wanna, did you wanna change that, um?
Oh, you're talking about like twenty acres.
Right.
I thought we were too, I think we.
I thought there was some, yeah, it was like a minimum that, that this would apply on lots that are a minimum of.
Oh, yeah.
X number of acres.
I don't think I had captured any other options, hold on.
Yeah, just to, to, you know, go back to the starting point, it seems the reason, the, the main reason we're detaining this is because of the possibility of litigation. And so, but by laying out a welcome mat, it's different than waiting for someone to come in. To reject and for them to, you know.
I just, I don't know, I feel like we should be laying out a welcome mat. You know, on, on large parcels, especially if it's already farmland or, or sand pit. I have no problem with that, I mean, we, we're in a global crisis right now.
We can't say that it's only, I mean, the, the proposal that, you know, that came, that we discussed, we've. That's a wonderful location, I think, but, you know, the one that keeps sticking in my mind. Is the one that annoys me, but they're gonna clear cut the forest. And that's something I don't think anybody really wants to see, but there's no way we can exclude it. And so it just seems that, um, you know, and the other thing I was thinking is that. You know, you listen to all the stuff that's going on with offshore wind and everything else. It looks like there's a lot of progress being made to achieving what our goals are. I mean, I think the government was talking about, you know, over seventy percent of our electric needs to be met by these two offshore. Products that they're talking about, so that's a big, you know, so I don't know if it's gonna be like the, um, the adventure pieces where there's a huge demand. And then it's met, and then there's no need to have these things anymore. And that's why I'm not eager to, to, to jump the line, and I, you know, uh. There was another thing that Mike was talking about, which is a small, you know, a home based one, you know, which I was fully in support of.
Yeah.
But.
But I, I guess, I do feel like we should find a way to make room for that sand pit, and that's what, you know, it is a special permit, it's not. It's not a by right.
Yeah.
We're not saying you can do this by right, and.
It's really hard to deny a special permit if someone is, you know, people can clear cut, people can think, you still have to go through concomit, but. You know, it's, I, I just. You know, and the other thing that we're trying to do in Upton too, is everyone knows, we're trying to do affordable housing, and we're gonna have M D T A communities. So this farmland, which is nice to preserve as farmland if possible, um, you know, is, it just can't. Accommodate every, and we're talking about these huge solar arrays. It just, you know, I understand that we're in climate crisis, and I just don't know if the demand. Is, you know, still going to be, I just, I, I don't like it, I just don't like it, uh, you know, and I know that. You know, other zoning options we've talked about to facilitate the sand pit, you know, there's other options there, but.
Can you say, uh, two, two existing open spaces?
Or two non-forced, yeah, o- open spaces, that's a different.
Well, that's true, but, so, yeah, I, I was sort of in the, I was in the middle, um, because. Well, I, I was not opposed to. That use, yeah, that, that's, that site, and I think the Kelly site, they came and they, you know, they was, they wanted to do something, and, and. You know, this wouldn't necessarily mandate that this is how they did, but they were gonna have crops.
Yeah.
And solar, and, and our existing bylaw didn't allow that, so I was looking for the flexibility to have. Projects that I personally liked.
Can we do that?
Uh, zoning czar, um, but, you know, to do that, I was looking at, you know. Appropriate setbacks and like put that in with the hundred feet, that sounds like it might be right, I don't know, you might say one fifty, who knows? We have the jumping cell tower, things like.
Gotta be able to fall three times, fall three times.
Um, cause that's how they go, yeah, I like that, um. But, you know, the setbacks, one, uh, I think the size of the, of, of, you know, the acres of the property is another. I'm not really talking about every one or two acre lot gets these things. But then with, you know, I talked to one of the neighbors to the sand pit, and what they're concerned with, it's not just the setback. It's, it's the visual impact, and that's where, that's, that's your concern with the North Street one, right? So there, they were gonna clear cut a, a forested hillside and put the array on, because it's a great. One should, while the vegetation, it's a great spot for catching rays.
Yeah.
So I would want something to say, you know, that it would minimize, uh, you know, the, the visual impact. From neighboring properties, so that we could say, hey, you know, like in that sand pit. It might be two hundred feet away, but there's one high point.
Right.
That everyone's gonna see from over here, you know, you're gonna see it from a mile, so let's not, you know, in a special permit, I would wanna say. You could do all around the base of that high point, but you can't do the high point, I want us to get that.
And I feel like the other piece, you know, you're talking about the forest, I feel like. And, and this, I don't know if we could put it to a special permit law, or this is why, or each of the special permit requirements. Um, basically an analysis, because if you're chomping down forests, then you're, then you're, you're trade off on those. Those, uh, those, the solar arrays.
Environmental cause, are you champion?
Yeah, I mean, I think it depends on what we're talking about, fundamental, are we talking about doing it, or. Do, requesting a change in the, in the zoning because of potential litigation? Or are we talking about a moral imperative?
I think it's because, usually, for me, it's because it's a moral imperative, I have kids, and I want the planet to think.
Be, because I think that.
Solar's ugly.
Solar's ugly, but you know what? Lanai is uglier right now.
Yeah. I know, but I wanna, I, I don't, I don't want solar everywhere, I want wind farms everywhere.
I want to, yeah, but, but, you know, communities burning up or other, so, that's reality that.
But if it's, but if, if we are doing it to avoid litigation. It's my understanding that the conditions that we were talking about don't hold water, and, you know, you can't, um. You know, you were talking about a case, I think, we didn't let you make your presentation. You know, we had, it was a case, I think, that Mike mentioned last time, which is, um, they had to do with cutting the forest, and it was. And it, it was thrown out, that, that's not a reason, you know, I don't think visual impact would be a sufficient reason to deny. So I think if you're putting out a welcome mat and then going, uh, 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 because you're putting something ugly in this beautiful area. And you're cutting down trees, then we'll get sued, so I think that the threat of litigation grows if you think you're gonna be able to put conditions on it. So I think it's all or nothing, we need to do it because it's a moral imperative, and that often can, you know, must do its share. To, um, or more than its share, uh, because we do have a lot of open space, or if we wanna look at. You know, I think the term used was sort of take a knee and see if anyone comes in and sues us. And I kind of like just to take it, and I agree with what you're saying, but I just, you know, I, I just, um. I, I see the technology shifting so quickly and how, you know, solar cells are, like. In ten years, we're probably gonna be these huge arrays, you know, what happened, you know, um, and the demand with, um. You know, once a forest, quote my dad, when a forest is gone, it's gone, and you're not gonna get it back. And, you know, what is happening with ops, you know, I just think there has to be more thought into it, like what, how necessary is this? To this, you know, and I'm, I'm not being oblivious to this level of planet, you know, because I do very much share your concerns, and I think everyone, you know. It's, the climate change is real, and we need to switch, and right now the biggest problem people are having to switch is it's not another one, but. The grid just doesn't have the juice to power, you know, so, I, you know, I, I sympathize, but I, I just. I just don't support, I just don't support, that's it. I told my girl there wasn't gonna be, that's.
Did you?
So, um, but I know this is just a sort of discussion, it's not.
Um, yeah, so. The, um. Back to the, the, the proposed options, yeah, um, and then, yeah, that's, that's, I mean, that's not for me to ca- uh, comment on, that's the board's decision. Um, the. Who I can, we can certainly, um, if you wanted to just go with the option one, before I get into the other options, and provide that, um, minimum. Uh, acreage, uh, we can decide on that, and I can probably, that would probably work in that additional note that I added, or, or another note. Um, to that, um, to that extent, um, just gotta arrive on a, on a minimum acreage on a lot, um. Uh, and then, and I think that would, um, achieve the base of what the, the, the board's been talking about today. The second option was all of those changes that I just discussed. Plus deleting note number ten, which was the note that caused the confusion because it makes reference to mass general law. Assuming that there might be a determination that these youths become exempt as per town com- per, per town council. There's been no determination that these are exempt, it's only been through court action. Um, and attorney general, um, approvals of, of bylaws, that it's kind of. You know, it's, it's pushed us in that direction, but there's no actual determination or change to mass general law that states this is exempt. Per se, you know, in all encompassing way, um, so just deleting that note because it. Per, per county council doesn't have any sort of protection or, or rights under it. Um, and again, everything else would stay the same, just the numbering of the notes would change. Uh, option for three, if we wanted to get into more details at this time. Uh, option number three, I, I, I looked at Mendon's bylaw, and I really liked what they had as far as showing, uh, possible. Um, language for accessory uses.
Sorry.
Okay?
Oh.
And so. So, and so that was an amendment to the accessory uses in structures section of the bylaw that then specifically calls out. Residential accessory use of these things, it, it specifically calls out rooftop, um, which our bylaw doesn't. It doesn't necessarily need to, because that's allowed by right, um. But, but there you have it, but then, uh, it also specifically calls out. Accessory residential ground mounted, which is not something that we do, is not something we provide for. Um, as a town, per town council, it's, it's her opinion that technically, if somebody wanted to push that issue, that's a by right use.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are ground mounted, yeah, like on South Street, it's got a, a residential ground mounted.
Yeah, um, and so then this, this section would then just provide, you allow for it and then create the parameters around it. This, uh, the, the maximum array size of, you know, twenty feet high is typical. Uh, the size of the, the collection being one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. That's roughly forty by forty, um, so that's a really good size. I, I asked Pat Roach, the building commissioner, to give me that mention somewhat, he's got. Uh, yard, and he, and he has a pretty large house that, um, that he's still from talking to me, it's a very large electrical bill. So I know that, uh, that size will be able to cover most any, um, residential use in town for at least, you know, a single family. Or larger single family, um, so that, and I know those are reasonable requirements, uh. To place if you wanted to proceed with adding that amendment to the bylaw to specifically call out accessory residential uses. Um, but we can also pause on that for the, in the meantime as well, you know. Wh- where's the board, you wanna go with it? Do you wanna kind of just take that base option? And make, uh, those changes we were discussing, adding the note that calls out the hundred foot buffer. Adding the additional language to call out the minimum acreage, um, do you also want to delete? Note ten, which is the reference to the mass general law, which.
Town council, yes, this number three that you've put in here, which is the SPI footprint of ground mounted non-residential accessory. Um, shall not exceed thirty percent of the lot area. So, do we wanna think about including that more broadly, something like that, like a maximum percentage of the lot area? In order to encourage people not to be, you know. Chopping down every tree on their, on their property, and, and replacing it with ground.
Yeah, we had also talked about doing a, um. A pop, like a hundred, a hundred percent.
Right.
They don't put a blanket, she takes us.
They're not good looking.
Some of the ones, the flowers.
That's what's in, uh, Madam Chairperson.
Sun like, like flowers do, and then they can close back up, and they've got their design fit.
There, Tom had something.
Oh, Tom, I'm sorry, we're talking about flowers.
Um, but for us, procedurally, uh, we would have to figure out what zones it's going in and put in our data table. And then put down what the process is with that zone, so we have to do those two things first, right?
Yeah, that's what, that's in, in what we've got here tonight.
Yeah, and I think that the, that was agricultural residential, which is about ninety percent of the town.
Yeah, and then, and, and ninety percent of the town isn't even, because you can't get solar farms up where Pat Roach lives, and, because he only, he doesn't get. Solar, uh, uh, electricity from November to February, so. North Street, Westboro Road, they're not gonna even have solar farms, so we're only gonna get solar farms in certain areas of the town. And it seems that the site plan review process is the most important for us. If it's, if it's us, uh, in a site plan review, that's where we'd put in. And it seems like even if it's setbacks, uh, we, we, if it's a hundred foot, that's fine, but. Uh, we waived that up in, in Northbridge for the senior housing, because. Across the street was fifty foot setbacks, so we matched it from the town, so if that's a waivable item for us, depending upon where it's built. We could treat this like anything else and go through a full site plan review process.
Although, just to interrupt for a sec, I thought that the solar array that was proposed before I was on this board was for North Street. I thought the one that they ended up.
It was.
Yeah, it was on North Street, so, uh, you know, and I think that they are building those boxes in different places in the town too. So I would, I, I wouldn't eliminate, you know, I mean, they can put it pretty much, I think, if they put it in North Street. Uh, you know, they can put it anywhere.
Well, I was thought with the, uh, senior housing project is, and then where it meets Westboro Road, where you lose cell phone coverage, that, that particular, any area it's blocked by the hill. Um, I agree, if you go far enough up on, you can get to, uh, um.
Things aren't that, the hills, though, I, you take down the. You're gonna.
Yeah, it won't go in every part of the town.
I'm sorry, John, you can keep going.
That was it.
What happens when you don't show up, we're just gonna keep interrupting you.
Well, so. If, if it were a site plan process, then we can put in the specifics, what they would have to include.
Are we talking about accessory right now, or are we talking about, uh, the, the large scale?
Large scale, but again.
Regardless, they would have to go through the special permit and site plan process through the planning board, which is essentially. In some ways, the same process.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm just thinking about.
But say you appealed, went to the attorney general, precedent is the attorney general said that the conditions you were speaking of don't hold water, they exonerate. So it is just, um, you know, we can put conditions in, but I would wager their meaning was.
I, I don't, I didn't get that specific feedback from town council, I, the, the feedback was. Um, not, was making sure you're not putting in conditions that make. That make the use not feasible, you know what I mean? So like, you can still impose conditions on large scale, uh, like, just like with any, anything that requires a special one. You can impose conditions, so long as then those conditions that you're doing, that you're imposing on top of the, uh. Yeah, the, the boilerplate conditions that you have on, in the bylaw don't also make it not feasible, it's, it's, you know.
Things like cutting down trees.
Yeah.
Make, try and, but if, but if you say thirty, you, you can't cut down more than thirty percent of the standing trees on a.
I, I think it's appro- it's probably appropriate.
Cut the trees first. Cut the trees first.
Yeah.
Well, and that's gonna happen.
Yeah. Um, if, yeah, if you're setting like, build, like, building, you have building coverage requirements, right? So, um, I mean, theoretically, that can be challenged all the way to the Supreme Court, right? And, and Supreme Court upholds property rights pretty much. And, and Supreme Court upholds property rights pretty much. Ninety-nine point nine nine percent of the time, right? Um, so, but, but the way that the, the. This state has been treating it is that, um, so long as you're not making it not feasible off, you know, from go. That it's reasonable. It's about putting in reasonable restrictions and not, you know, because there used to be the practice. Back in the day, it still exists currently, when there's a requirement to allow for a use. Towns have said, okay, well then you can only have that brand new use that you need to construct on a new lot in this area of West. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So you can't, you can't do that because that's de facto, uh, making it, um, you know, a bar from the town, but. You still create reasonable restrictions that are, uh, intended to achieve, uh, a public health or public good purpose. And, you know, the, 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 the notion of, uh, in this case. Array coverage, you know, lot disturbance, you know, it, it could be that that's acceptable. Um, I don't know if it, it would be, but I, it's, I don't think it's. On its face, if it hasn't already been decided upon, I don't think it's completely unreasonable as far as what I've read from the attorney general and what they've. What they've let pass and what they have.
With the acreage pass monitor, because, you know, as the, these large tracts of buildable land are getting scarcer.
Yeah.
So if I were of that ilk in government and I wanted these things to go everywhere, I'd say by putting a. Minimum acreage of, is just making it undoable and.
Possibly, I mean, if you, if your minimum acreage is a hundred acres and there's no parcel of land.
That's what it's saying, some cell towers, right? The, the, you know, the. The neighborhood wanted to make it a hundred acres and they wanted to make it a thousand foot setback and it's, there was no. And there was literally no place in town where.
Where, yeah.
And, and. But that's not what we're talking about, actually fitting it in, in three places that we can think about. So.
I don't too, Kelly's farm and the, well, we didn't result in, it was called the town on South Street now.
I don't think we, I mean, I, I don't think that is a good one.
Yeah, it doesn't matter because we'll be, they can do it if they want. And that's, that's the problem.
And the, well, the, the problem is whether we said they could do it, and if they're gonna sue us for saying no, they're not suing us for saying no. You know, one way or another.
And there's also the restricting factor that I had brought up before, which is. They're likely to only go where three phase energy exists.
Right.
Now, granted, there's always the opportunity to expand three phase energy, um, but it is a controlling factor.
Yeah.
Which it is in, on North, I mean, on.
South Street.
South Streets, I've just added it.
Yeah, currently it's just added, so there's no host capacity, which is why he's jumping on us to be at the first voice and the plug into it. But, uh, yeah, and three phase power elsewhere is also where the, the property we were talking earlier in the corner, uh, up near, uh, North, North Street. So, Daniel, can you just, you?
Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to log in, I, I don't know what I'm doing here.
Oh, you're, you're, you're in, so whatever you did, don't change it.
Okay, thank you.
Because my question, if, if we, if it's not in, if it's not in, it's not in, you know, you can only do it in, you know, three places. Are we more likely to lose in the ca, case of a lawsuit? Are we more likely to lose them? Than if we've said, yeah, you can do it, but you must meet these conditions.
Yes.
And the conditions are not outrageous, but they're.
But with people who didn't get that far and we didn't allow it, so that's the question. We don't really allow it for these one district. Is somebody gonna go and put it here even though I can't?
Well, we actually, somebody's come in and said, I won't put it here even though I can't, twice, in the last two years.
Yeah, one example would be, we have, if we have a hundred foot buffer, uh, what can we say? Do we, can we mandate that something gets grown in that buffer at a certain height? Uh, you know, we can have the buffer, but what, what control do we have inside that for protection?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I would say you have some leeway, I mean, I think if, if you're, I mean, you obviously can't then demand that, uh. Three hundred foot redwoods be planted in, in that buffer, but.
But that, that's what I was trying to say, you know, you, you, it has, you know, the, the, the special permit. Process can be used to minimize the, you know, to, to minimize, just like we do with light.
Yes, right.
Yeah, you can't have light pollution that leaks off your property. Here you can't have.
Kettles.
Right, yeah, I, I wanna say that, you know, this, this won't, this won't shine on the neighbors. And it won't, you know, it, so if you've got that high point, you, we don't want you to put it there and we can, we can look at the site and say. You know, you can put it on everything below this elevation, but you can't put it on anything above that elevation on that site. So, I mean, I'd be comfortable there. I mean, if I'm trying to figure out.
Thing to defend is the aesthetics of it.
Right.
Compared to the neighbors.
I think if we're, I, I get it, you know, Mendon was told they needed to have a adult bylaw, otherwise. Adult uses could go anywhere and they had never had an adult application, they put the bylaw in, they had two applications, and the first here, so. Yeah. This, that's, it's true, that could happen. But I think if we, if we want to allow it in AR. I'm more comfortable with that than the ground mounted accessory uses, whether it's residential or, or. Uh, commercial, I, I'd be, I'd be okay if we thought we had control. You know, right now, I'm comfortable with getting rid of that footnote ten, um, because I don't think it does do anything, you know. I don't think it's worth having something in there that doesn't do anything.
So, uh, what's, uh, if I can, uh, to the chair, what's the consensus of the board now? Is it's kind of over, I mean. Paul just sort of stated a preference for option number two, um, and then I think, uh. Possibly adding some language to have a minimum acreage as well as them?
That's, that's my preference, and it would, I would like it if we could have. Other, you know, whether it's a percentage or something like that, um. You know, I don't know, like, I know that, for instance, you know, there was a lot of pushback, well, they cut down all that forest to build Cobbler's Creek. And it's like, yep, they did, but they had the right to build there. And they actually cut down less forests because of the way it's done, you know, where it's compact. And I, you know, I think those are the, it's, it's really hard to, to, you know. Do we ask them to look at carbon sequestration on the property and before and after, you know, give us an estimate.
A little lower than applicants. Just a question, um, we're talking about proposing this zoning bylaw change in the November town meeting.
This was just gonna get to, I, I asked that we just have a, um, a placeholder.
Okay.
Uh, for this.
Okay.
Um, you know, assuming it's, it's the, the modest changes, um, that we've been discussing, I figured.
Go ahead, I, I'm not.
I was gonna say, if it's the modest changes that the board's comfortable with, I thought we could meet, probably meet that deadline. But if there's more we want to do, uh, with it, we can probably wait until spring.
Do we have to get the conditions, um, do, I mean, would the board have to. Set up the conditions of the special permit before it's voted on, or would we do that?
For an application, yeah, if you were to receive an application.
No, but I mean, you know, we're going to the town, we're going to town meeting to ask for bylaw change.
Yeah.
Do we, before that town meeting?
Well, you have to have your public hearing on it, yeah.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing, we have the condition.
You're saying, do we, do we wanna have?
Do we have to have a public, do we have to have the conditions now? Because we just started talking about.
I think some of them would be in there, I mean, because I, I, you said I'm stating a preference for option two, I guess I'm, I'm selecting pieces of option two, right? So getting rid of footnote ten, I, I don't know that I necessarily want a large scale. Array in AR at this forty to eighty thousand square feet, I'm, I'm talking about. You know, having, maybe it's a, maybe it's a new use, you know, use forty. A large scale ground mounted, uh, you know, on something that's much bigger, you know, than, than two lot, than two acres. You know, I'm talking twenty acres or more, um, and. That would be allowed in AR with a special permit by the planning board.
Yeah.
And.
So I don't.
You have to have that number twelve.
Square footage here isn't the acreage of the lot, it's the square footage of the panel.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
I read it, I.
But I'd still, I'd, I'd still wanna put in there.
This is the ground.
For AR.
Residential, yeah, okay.
For AR, I'd wanna know that it's gotta be all, just for me, I'd want two things. One, it would have to be a larger acreage than was talked about, and two, I'd want that note about the, you know, the, that.
Is it living? Or, or, or visual disturbances to neighbors or something.
My, my point is, I, I want it like the lights, you can't shine on your neighbors, and I, I, that, that's what I'm really gonna be looking for.
And you're gonna be not, you don't want the allowance for accessory. Cause I, you know, I think the question too is, do people even need zoning board approval, like they're about to put a little array in for their, like, you know, Pat Roach did. I mean, I didn't even need.
I don't wanna be a solution in search of a product.
Right, exactly.
So it's, it's like if that, if we don't think that needs a solution, then.
Okay.
I've got a technical question for Mike, uh, Madam Chairperson. Does this require three phase? Does the.
Our, large scale does, if, uh, I don't, I'm not sure if you, accessory to homes, I'm not sure if that requires, um, three phases. Certainly doesn't if you're capturing the, um, the energy on the property, but large scale, uh, commercial, yes, you need three phase.
Which, which we are limited on, uh, my, my question is, uh, similar to planning boards having the, uh, can, uh, require town hookups. On parcels, can we require three phase be run to the project?
Yes. I've seen that in other bylaws.
Thank you.
So do folks wanna vote tonight or we wanna think about?
There's, there's nothing to vote on.
Yeah, I think.
Don't vote.
Mind, do you mind trying to synthesize what, what we've all yelled at you?
I'll.
Come up with a compromise?
Yeah, I'll come up with.
Three of us might vote for?
I'll condense it to one option.
Yeah, no, I'm three out of five.
I'll condense it to one option for the next meeting and then, uh, we can discuss, um, potentially, uh, beginning advertising for a public hearing. This, you know, things might change as well through a public process, so.
When does the, um, warrant close or is it already closed?
Uh, has not closed, it closes September, I wanna say September seventh, but I think that's wrong.
That's soon.
But you got like two weeks on it.
And we have a placeholder anyway.
So see, I have a placeholder in for this.
Okay, alrighty, so we done this conversation, okay? And then, um, the next item that's open for discussion is the, uh. Lots three and four, Westboro Road moving driveway to lot line. And I noticed that Helen's phone, that's how, is that how you pronounce your names, Daniel? Daniel?
Hi, I'm here, Daniel Bedrosian, yes.
Okay, and Mike, do you wanna start and then?
Oh, sure, yeah, so, um, to speak with Daniel, um, he purchased the, uh, the, the McDonald lots. Um, up on, uh, Westboro, uh, road, um, Jeff's block. And so, um, so lots three and four, I forget which one is the large lot, but one of them's the large lot. Um, frontage is reduction lot and that's, um, next to, uh, one of the standard A and R lots. You had a plan, oh, there's a plan right there for you, but it was also a plan distributed, um, with your, with your materials electronically. The plan shows two driveways that are basically, um, straddle the lot line between the lots. I wanted, um, Daniel to bring this before the planning board, just so that everybody's comfortable with what he's proposing. Um, it's, it's, um. Two driveways that are basically pushed together, there is a separate separation of a median in between them. There won't be any sort of easement that allows access from one lot to the other over each other's driveway or anything like that. So I just wanted the feedback from the board that everybody agrees that this would not trigger. Common driveway special permit.
So that's what there is, there's one of these on, is it North Street just past the lot? Yeah, there's a, there's almost exactly the same thing.
Daniel, did I, did I miss anything?
I think it's frozen.
I don't think I missed anything.
So the approved plan has what looks like a common drive?
Oh no, he's moving now.
Yep.
Daniel's okay.
Um, no, the approved plan does not have what appears to be a common drive, it's, it's very much two separate driveways.
But he wants to move them together at the lot line, and so he'd have to go to ZBA for setback then? I think it's not for them.
There's no setback, yes.
Yep, so what we've run into in the past is more practical, I think, than legal.
Okay.
Um, when we've had those sort of what look like common drives and we've asked folks to make it really, really clear. Who's driveway is whose and, you know, kinda have a, a, some sort of a, call it a median strip, you know. That was between them, so everyone knew who was supposed to plow and who was not supposed to step over and play. Pobscotch or whatever, um, that was it really, that.
Yeah, and that, there is, I mean, there is that example, that's the only one I can think of, there's that, there is a script that runs up between these two driveways.
And, and then, you know, when, when somebody comes in with an A and R plan with us, they, they show us where their. Proposed driveway is and it's gotta be, they have to be able to legally, you know, access through the frontage.
Yeah.
But those driveways move, you know, from, from what we approved, um, you know, with the plan we approved it as a proposed driveway, so we can see the elevation.
Yeah.
And it, it does move, sure, so, um.
Paul, how do you do snow removal with, if, if there's no line between, how do you, how do you plow without plowing onto somebody else?
But there is a line.
Yeah, no, no, Tommy's right, it, it, that's a practical question, right? Even if you've got, you know, I, I've got a yellow line between our two driveways, when I plow, I'm throwing. Something onto your property, Tom, or I'm salting onto your property, I guess.
Well, how, how big is the buffer between the two?
I, I, I proposed a one foot stone, uh, crushed stone buffer.
How high is the stone?
Oh, it's flush with the driveway.
It's crushed stone, Tom.
That's not gonna provide safe access for those two. Through the winter months and it's a winter, it's just, no, you, somebody's gonna be plowing and they're gonna be plowing, the plowing's gonna go on the other person's driveway. And they're not gonna be able to get out of their driveway because the other guy just plowed them in and it's an emergency, they have to be separated, by at least a safe amount.
Would that be satisfied by expanding the buffer? And one foot is?
One, it's not very, yeah, especially if it's one foot gravel, you know. The one up on North Street, I'm gonna guess it's like five feet maybe between.
And it's, it's grassy, is it like gravel mounted or something?
I don't remember.
I don't think I ever went up and saw it.
I, I've driven past it, I remember seeing it and going, oh, look, I remember that.
But, but it's five feet, about.
Bigger, yeah, yeah, significantly, so when you're plowing, the snow has a flint to go.
Exactly.
Cause we're, I mean, we're always, we're not thinking of, of the applicant here, it's, you know, it's, it's two winters from now. And, and, you know, and somebody just doesn't have the manners that you'd hope and. It's a problem, and we're trying to just avoid that, so. I, I think it's, you know, a reasonable space between the driveways, I'm not, I'm not on where they are. If people have driveways and you're very near their neighbor's lawn.
Yeah.
What's, you know, I don't think it matters that it's near the driveway, but you do wanna.
And do we even, I mean, this is really a Pat Roach and curb cut at this point, right? Really, I, I don't know.
You don't really have, you don't have authority over this right now, it's, it's, it's a matter of a question of, of applicability. Just confirming that the board doesn't consider this, um, to fall under your common driveway provisions, which I don't think it does, but I wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to get that affirmation from the board.
I don't, I don't think it is, though I do suggest that you.
Make it quicker.
Sure, classroom, it might, might be a good idea to look at making it more of a distance.
But I think that is a pat issue and it's a, I mean, it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
Um, as Tommy said, you know, if the snow is, if you're gonna have one guy plow in the morning and the other one has to get up in the afternoon, they plowed in. It's just an issue, but I think it's a pat issue.
It ain't our problem, yeah.
Right, I think we were in charge of seeing that they had the ability to put safe, you know, safe driveway in. If he wants to change his curb cut, we're never gonna know about it usually, but the building inspector will have to say, that's good enough. And I would suggest that one foot of crushed stone isn't enough if I were a building inspector.
But I actually chose it as two feet.
Okay. But still, I'm flush, I think so.
So.
All right, um this is the board all set?
Does anyone else have any questions? Do you have any questions, Daniel?
I don't. I I guess I'll, what's the next step? If I have to make it wider, I can make a, I can make a bigger uh separation, you know, like four feet.
Well, we don't, we we can't, I mean, we are suggest, we're telling, we're thinking that it might be a good idea, but we're basically saying that it's not an issue for us and something to talk to the building inspector about.
Oh, well, I'll talk to him.
There's read on it.
Sure.
Oh.
Yeah, Daniel, I wanted confirmation from the board tonight that they, I wouldn't require any sort of further board action, given that this was uh subject to a special permit before.
Okay.
Permit for common driveway, and I wanted to make sure that that wasn't gonna trigger any of this. So it looks like that's it's a census that it's not going to. Um so then it's just a matter of uh talking again with with, I know, and I know you have talked with Pat Roach about the driveway. And then I think you've also looped in the fire department.
Yes, yes, I have.
So so just getting their input on it and and probably DPW as well for the curb cut, um if you haven't already.
Okay, I'll do that. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll take care.
Bye bye.
Um and any proposed special founding articles on the planning board?
Was it, so is there anything else you wanna attempt to accomplish? Um you want me to reserve any other?
Nope.
Coming into spring, I'm gonna probably be pushing for a whole bunch of housing things, but I already have.
Yeah.
Would have liked to done.
Uh so yeah, no, I figured I'd ask for that. Um the, I am gonna talk to EDC about um you uh allowed uses within the center business districts. Um because I I I found out through reviewing it today that was it Pilates Studios and Yoga Studios are require a special permit?
Yoga, yoga. It's it's specifically named.
Yeah.
They allow spas and, you know, that type, no, in some, estheticians.
Yeah.
Facials, they don't allow vehicles.
No, and spas are allowed, too. Spas are allowed.
Spas are not, they don't or not.
When 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 Cor was there in the bill, in the big building, I wonder if she had a special permit or if nobody knew that it was.
I know, it aired that it was.
So what I've I've seen on this before, and I don't know if it's yoga or if it's just workout and and of any kind.
They allow workout.
Allow, do they really?
Yeah, they allow.
Those people, yoga are wild, so I think you need to.
Well, because what people are concerned with is the hours of operation. Yeah, a lot of, some people, like, I wanna go at five.
Yeah.
At, you know, AM, and I wanna go at nine PM, and and that's what the issue is. I'll, if they're letting a gym, but not a.
So like, you know, a couple of.
Amusements, they allow gyms.
A couple of examples by by special permit, and also naming ones that are allowed by special permit. Um video arcade, performing arts, such concert venue, biking and pedestrian facilities, um pottery, pottery and painting studio. A pottery and painting studio for other similar amusements. That's what's allowed by special permit. And then under, and that's qualified under amusements for some reason. And then under personal or consumer service establishments by right, or things like beauty shops, barber shops, laundromats, hat repair shop. A day spa and massage centers. Uh but then by special permit, gym, in in the center business districts, gym, fitness center, yoga and Pilates studio, acupuncture, esthetician, esthetician, um chiropractic or other similar personal services. So I just thought, I thought the differentiation, the difference between uses was odd. Um and I also thought that, you know, things like gyms and yoga studios and things like that invite people with expendable income into the business district. So those might be things you wanna allow by right. It's just like a tenant fit out.
Right, gyms are allowed by right under the amusements.
Can I, can I point out that I don't remember ever doing a special permit, say, for body fix, which is, right? I mean, that's the reality is.
Yeah.
It's a nice looking building and.
It's a nice looking building, it's a good service. They do.
I I assume this this was some sort of carryover from previous iterations of the bylaws, so.
This is all that's.
Get a repair shop in there.
No, we can't let it get knocked down, remember? Repair, oh, like that, that got, that got knocked down ten years ago.
I bet there used to be a lot of hat repair places around here.
Mm-hmm.
Many years ago.
Well, that guy.
The yoga classes used to be wild in the old days, so we had to write a law for it.
Must have been no yoga.
We used to have the defense class upstairs during our planning board.
Oh, God, that's right.
Yeah, kitchen, butt kicked.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Any other, okay, any other items that we need to talk about? Or do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion, Paul. Margaret, hi, Ken, what's his name?
And I.
Eyes, okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.